Good evening and welcome to our school director's meeting. If you'll please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening and welcome. And thank you for joining us. First, on the docket, we always like to recognize any scouts that might be in the audience. Are there any scouts that are with us? Oh, I see. Oh, excellent. Would you like to stand and introduce yourselves and tell us what troop you're in? Or what school you go to now?
Yes.
Yes?
My name is Evan and I go to Hurney Elementary and I am Cub Scout.
That's great. Thank you for coming this evening.
Hi, I'm Molly. I go to ITech Prepory and I'm in Girl Scouts Troop 4-5-0.
This is Jack Pendleton and he is also in the same Cub Scout troop as his brother. He goes to Hurney Elementary.
And is there one more? No? Okay. All right. So then our first order of business is to adopt this evening's agenda. So we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. If so moved, in second in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is special recognition. The first one is it's Native American History Month and we have a proclamation that Director Rogers will read.
Okay. State of Washington Proclamation. Whereas Washington is home to 29 federally recognized Indian tribes as well as out-of-state tribes with treaty reserved rights in Washington, and members and descendants of tribes from all over the country also reside in the state of Washington. And whereas Native American contributions and values have helped shape the social, political, environmental, and economic fabric of the state while also enhancing freedom, prosperity, and cultural diversity. And whereas state law, specifically RCW 28A 320170 mandates the teaching of tribal history, culture, and government in common schools, which opens should be greatly to improving schools' history curriculum and enhances awareness for a better cultural understanding. And whereas the state of Washington is committed to strengthening the government-to-government relationship between tribal nations and continues to work with tribal governments on issues of mutual concern for the betterment of all. And whereas the state of Washington has designated the Friday immediately following the Fourth Thursday in November a state legal and school holiday known as Native American Heritage Day. And whereas Washington joins other states across the nation in celebrating Native American Heritage Month, honoring the unique heritage of this continent's first people and reaffirming the commitment to respect each tribe's sovereignty and cultural identity. Now therefore I, J. Inslee, Governor of the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim November 2019 to be Native American Heritage Month and November 29th, 2019 to be Native American Heritage Day in Washington. And I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed by Governor J. Inslee.
Great, thank you Rachel. We don't have anybody here to, which is one for us to observe. Any comments from the school board? I know that our state Board, School Board Association has put an emphasis on Native American history and studying and making sure that it's recognized within the state. So it's an important part of our education.
It's important to acknowledge that we have tribes in our area and that we want to be respectful and make sure our children understand their role in our history and our role in the relationship that we have with the tribes. And some of it's challenged, challenging and, you know, but we all need to acknowledge that history, so it's important.
I think it's worth mentioning that WASTA does this work. It has, they call it a government-to-government committee, school directors around the state who interface with tribal leaders on a regular basis to try and understand and develop best practice policies around these issues. And one of the members of that committee is Donna Sinclair, Director in Washougal. So we have Southwest Washington Voice who's been very active in asking for greater recognition and improvements to that kind of curriculum for years, teaching as she does in her professional capacity at the university. So we're well represented there. In fact, I was offered the spot and turned it down and suggested her name in order to have that voice there.
Great, thank you. All right, well, next, one of my favorite times of the year is when we do our Evergreen Awards. And for this, I'm going to call up our Chief Human Resource Officer, Janay Gomes, up to the podium. Hi, Janay.
Thank you. Before I begin, I first wanted to say thank you to Kristi Minnick. She's our Human Resource Coordinator and puts all of this together and contacts everybody. So if you could join me in round of applause this evening. So thank you, everybody, for coming. If I could just address the audience for a moment. The quarterly awards for employee of, well, it's not the year of the quarter, but for Evergreen, we have a process where we send out and take nominations from anybody in the school district. So these recipients are nominated by their colleagues. There's a variety of categories for them to be nominated under, but most importantly, they inspire others, positivity, and just their overall dedication and working hard with the students. And so we have three different categories. There's classified, certificated, and the third one is a team and/or an administrator. So we're going to begin this evening with the classified recipient. And I'm going to call up the Administrator Heather Fowler with Legacy. And she'll call up the recipients and share some words about each individual.
Thank you. So if I can get Debbie and Michelle. Sorry, Michelle, your face looks like this was a surprise. So this is Debbie Malden and Michelle Hawkins. Oh, thank you. So I have to read this on my phone because usually it's Debbie or Michelle who keeps everything organized in my life. And since this was a surprise, they didn't know about this. So luckily Kristi had an example to give me a screenshot of it. So I'm just going to read you what I wrote. So last year, we lost Secretary due to her taking a full-time job at another school. And our registrar was out most of the year due to a family illness and she resigned at the end of the year. And so these two ladies took on the workload of an entire school. And for that is the reason that I nominated them. So the workload that Debbie and Michelle have taken on without a second thought has been admirable. Both women show students, sorry to interrupt you on that. Both women show students what great perseverance are and do it without a single complaint at the extra hours needed to get the work done. They did this even in the face of their own personal challenges. And I apologize for giving out personal information.
It's okay.
Michelle's home was completely destroyed in a fire last year in the spring. And she only missed three days of work, which to me was, I think, one of the most amazing things I've ever seen. Their hard work and contributions enable Legacy to continue to improve and add additional supports and avenues for graduation, ensuring success for every student. I have yet to see one of them take an actual lunch, yet they are never too busy to help a student or let in ear when a student needs someone to listen to them. I can say without reservation, I have never worked with two people who could do more in a day and are more extraordinary than Debbie and Michelle. And we have a few members from our school who came tonight to also want to be. So I'd like to call up.
Thank you. Our certificated award, Tilly Hyer, the Administrator, that will come up and the recipient. So Kelsey Richter, come up, please.
So I am so honored to be standing up here and on behalf of Covington and to honor our school psychologist. When I first came to Covington, I just, I was just so overwhelmed by just all of the collaboration that I saw there. And Kelsey is just such a big part of that. She is one of the most professional educators we've ever met. She's a big system, has a big system view on school issues, yet manages to also be detail-oriented and extremely organized. She demonstrates professional poise, definitely, in carrying out her duties. We call her a gem and we are very fortunate to have her on our team. Since Kelsey has started working at Covington, we have seen our special education department work more harmoniously and more collaboratively and thus have had more positive impacts on student learning. This result is due to Kelsey's dedication to educate all staff and foster collaboration among special ed and also general ed staff. Kelsey has been in our district for 12 years. Her excellence is demonstrated by her involvement in our school community and how she goes above and beyond her job scope as a school psychologist. She's an integral part of our MTSS team and is a member of our PBIS team. She volunteers to get student incentives for our PBIS program and always has snacks available for students. She provides professional development for all staff regarding IEP special education processes. And she does help facilitate training for our special ed paraeducators. She collaborates with admin, teachers, and paraeducators alike and is looked to as a leader in the building. And the words of a student, she is the boss of the counseling center. She also works directly with students, helping them set goals and achieve them through behavior, tracking forms, and incentives. Kelsey believes in students 100%. We have seen her take some of the most challenging students with complicated behavior plans and work with them day in and day out. When the students make gains, it can be attributed, you know, very 100% to the positive connections she makes and her belief in their success. She promotes a positive and effective schoolwork environment. For example, one year for the National School Counselor Week, she recognized the counseling team each day with a different, a little treat and a message to them, expressing her appreciation for the work that school counselors do. This recognition meant so much to them and it really demonstrated how she's a team player. Most of all, we just really enjoy her humor and her kindness. They're just such a valuable asset. So I'm so proud and honored to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our third and final one of the Evergreen Awards is a group this evening and one that's destined for a team college recipient.
Thank you for having me. I am really proud to present an award to our special ed department at Frontier. And I'd like to call up Maria Black, who is our Life Skills Teacher, Michelle Herr, who is our newest ALC teacher, Brian Hansen, who is skip, Jerika Spangler, learning support, Kristen Mann, learning support and skip, Terry Uncle, who's learning support, and our spin Administrator, Marshall Pendleton. Being the new principal at Frontier, I'm still getting to know how awesome these guys are. When I started the year, we had a situation with a student who was struggling to a severe level. And what I noticed with this team was they all gathered together to really support this student and to make sure that his transition into Frontier was a positive one and that he had a community in the classroom and that he made friends. And I was laughing the other day because I saw a student run by me at lunch really fast and I went to tell him to slow down and it was him. And so I thought, no, just keep running, just keep running. He'd had such a hard time. But this group of staff has done such a great job supporting him and helping him, you know, grow and feel confident in the community. Some things that were said about all of you by our school psychologist, Cecilia Fowler, who nominated this group. The special education teachers at Frontier are incredibly dedicated to their students. They collaborate and support each other to figure out schedules, problem-solve situations, and design curriculum ultimately to wrap around and support students. I couldn't nominate just one or just five of them as they all work closely together to make an effective, caring, flexible network of care for students. This group of teachers regularly introduce and seek out new research and resources to bring back to each other and to students, often prompted by the need to come up with something unique for a student. They often volunteer to provide an extra check-in with a student or staff member who needs it, offering to go the extra mile because they know that others would do the same for them and their students. This collaboration is made for a strong team that provides professional thoughtful service to students, families, staff, and the rest of the Frontier community. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have a couple of other nominations. We have our ABM, which is our janitorial, and Chart Wells, which helps with the nutrition services. And they're just as important part of our team and they're contracted, but they also have Employee of the Year awards. So we're going to ask Dan Brett to come up and introduce the recipients for their award.
Good evening, School Board. Appreciate this opportunity. I'd start off with some introductions. Tara Higgin, a lot up here from Sifton Elementary. And Grady Gobord, one of our nice supervisors servicing all the sites. And then James Apeta, nice supervisor. And Deep Fuchs, our regional vice president. All right, so just a few words for them. Starting with Tara. Tara's been with ABM for 12 years, is a daily custodian at Sifton Elementary. She's also been a daily custodian at Heritage and has worked on various special projects and events support for us. We especially want to recognize Tara for how very engaged she is with staff and students, her vigorous work style, willingness to take on additional assignments, and her marvelous performance. Tara has also been instrumental in training many custodians on various tasks, including how to change a thousand locker combinations without going cross-eyed. Thank you, Tara. Grady's been with ABM for two years and is a nice supervisor providing service at all of the schools. He has many years of industry experience, including floor care, carpet care, window cleaning, aerial lift work, pressure washing, supervision, and all aspects of general cleaning. We especially want to recognize Grady for his high standard he has for himself and his coworkers, his expertise, his tremendous performance, and always having the can-do attitude. Thank you, Grady.
I agree with that. We have Hussain with Chart Wells. And he's going to come up and then we'll look at all of you over here behind the board and give a raise handoff.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Malino. You know, I have, we are recognizing two employees. Wendy is the first one to you. Please come up. And so before I read the statement that we wrote, I wanted to share with you how I truly in my heart feel about Wendy. I tell my staff that you touch the students with all their senses. They smell the food, they crunch the food, they touch and feel, they taste, all their senses. Wendy truly adds another element to it, which is love, which I think is a key element to that student's success. So when you walk in as a student, imagine this, you walk into as a student, you see this big smile of this manager's face that comes in, greets you, give you the best meal they can give you, and then see you on your way. So that's how I exactly feel about you, Wendy. Now I'll read the stuff that we wrote. If you got indulged for a minute. Wendy, she's been with us for 10 years. She's the cafeteria manager at BBC. A constant resource of warmth and kindness, Wendy is a ray of sunshine for her students. She thinks not for herself, but for the kids that she provides meals for. Anyone who visits BBC can see that she engages the kids in healthy choices and will go out of her way to lift their spirit with a kind word and a big smile. We are so lucky to have Wendy in our team.
Thank you.
The second employee is also, is actually my mentor. So when I have a stressful day, I go to the school, I reach out to Debbie Del Prado, say, "Okay Debbie, one idea, can you help me out? Can you advise me on this situation?" So she had 17 years in the district. She served many of our students, some of which may be our administrators in the school today with us. Just an amazing person, kind and loving. Just as she gives more than she ever takes. The love, the respect to the children, and the genuine interest in their well-being is always seen in her behaviors. Again, I'll read the written statement here about her, which is also very true. Debbie Del Prado, unfortunately, she sent me a message she had a family emergency today that just happened to health situation so she couldn't be here. But Debbie is a spark of creativity and joy at Ellsworth Elementary School. She loves all her students and even hands out special pencils for kids on their birthdays. She really does that. Her mind is always focused on how she can make the day more fun for her students. Debbie can bring a smile to anyone who enters her kitchen. We are so lucky to have her energy and dedication in our team. So I'm too bad she's not here, but I'll make sure she knows that you guys have heard this and appreciated this. Oh, thank you.
Thank you for everybody being here. As we all know, it's such an honor to, y'all, to receive the quarterly Employee of the Year award. I keep saying we are. Anyways, did you want them to do your picture now or?
Yeah.
We can all just give a round of applause for everybody.
You're going to have to get in really tight. Should we see everybody? You're just afraid of Mike. Too many photographers.
A big smile, guys.
All right, next on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda. We will entertain a motion for approval. I have moved that we approve the Board Consent Agenda as presented. So moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will move on to the Superintendent Consent Agenda. And again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda as, for that, second.
Moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move on to the Superintendent Report. And so for this, we're going to send it over to Superintendent Malino.
I just have a few things to mention. The first thing I would mention is over the last few weeks, I've been getting out to some of the buildings and visiting with principals and seeing some of the programs. In particular, was able to go to visit the 49th Street Academy and spend some time there with their staff and kind of listen to some of the difficulties or issues that they're dealing with. Also, in the building visits, was able to visit Orchards Elementary and have an experience with their SLC program, which was another good experience and opportunity for me to observe some of the things that our buildings are working through in terms of the struggles that they have with some of the issues that arise during the day. And we have been working as a cabinet and looking at different alternatives to provide some additional support to the buildings. But it's been a great experience. I'm happy to have the opportunity to not only observe the program but also talk with the staff and kind of get some feedback from them in terms of what their views are on things we might be able to do. I'm also going to be able to, I think I'm going out to Marion here in another few days and, or the next few weeks in Ellsworth. Some of the programs where we have SLC programs and have an opportunity to interact with some of our staff and come up with some ideas around solutions that we can provide. So that I'm happy with that. Also wanted to mention that Janay has kind of taken over the operations meetings in terms of running a lot of those and setting the content. We were able to spend some time at our operations meeting, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, by table, kind of looking at all the different programs that we have within the district. Not, well, there are two parts. Well, the first part was just getting feedback on areas that we could potentially improve or just hearing feedback where we're doing well also. We wanted to give, you know, part of the whole reset that we had eight months ago was that we want to listen to our staff. We've got a lot of people that have been in the district a long time. And even those that haven't have ideas and thoughts on how we can adjust and make changes. So we wanted to continue to alter that. We spent the first half just kind of talking about programs that we have. What are the things that we could do to continue to improve our programs? And then the second was around the budget reductions. What areas in the budget reductions might we, you know, just getting feedback, how is that going as we're getting into the beginning of the school year? So we, by table, kind of kept a Google Doc or whatever, you know, one of those where people could log in and provide feedback. So we're going through that, disseminating a lot of that. And we'll come back with some ideas on some of the areas. We're looking for themes. I'm happy to say on the budget reduction side of things, for the most part, I think that things are being implemented about as well as you could expect when you're thinking about any kind of an adjustment in terms of what's being delivered as a program. But then on the other side, you know, there's just themes that we'll, we'll continue to look at that and I'll share some of those things with you in the next weeks as we look at how can we continue to react to what we're hearing from the buildings. I was able to participate, I didn't go to the tour, but I was able to greet folks for the community tour that we had last week and then have lunch with them. We had probably somewhere around 30 people attend. It was a community tour, but also Russian-speaking, with Russian-speaking interpreters for that, so I think it's Yelena, is that her name?
Yelena.
Yelena, and then Svetlana, I think were the two that did that. Yeah, I grew up with deaf parents, and you kind of think about the interpreting when you're interpreting, but when you're with the deaf community, you're talking and signing at the same time, so it was hard for me to talk and stop, and then have it interpreted and then talk and stop. I tend to just never stop talking. So that, but it was great. There were a lot of questions asked, and Lori's looking at me because she gets to experience me talking all day. It was great. At the end, we take questions from the folks that attended, and there was a question from an English-speaking patron, and then we were gonna wrap up, and then one of the Russian speakers asked a question, and then that spurred another question, and they got real comfortable, and there were a lot of questions asked and answered. So I thought it was great, it was a great opportunity, and it was a really nice visit for us. And then the last thing I will mention is Victoria and I were fortunate enough to participate in the Covington Veterans Day Assembly, and then there were Veterans Day assemblies across the district, obviously, but we were able to attend the Covington Assembly. So for me, it was interesting to see the kind of the crowd control, you know, you're talking about 1,100 kids, middle school kids in a gym with a lot of them on the floor. That was great. We had Mayor McInerney Ogle came and she spoke to the kids. But to me, what was the most impressive was just the music that the kids, you know, you think about middle school, so they had the band do a little, and then they sang, and then they had the Strings Orchestra, and then they brought in at the end, they had a song played where each of the armed services was represented by the song, they were able to stand up and be saluted by the crowd during the song, and then they finished it with, I don't know who they got, they got a lady that plays the bagpipes, and she was amazing. And then Bruce Dunn had kind of arranged, the band teacher at Covington had kind of arranged for the band, it kind of started slow and it built with singing, I mean, it was great, it was a really cool event. So I'm really happy I was able to participate and just, you know, Tilly's left already, but obviously they did a great job of managing the kids, and then the whole assembly was just great, and the veterans that were there were so appreciative of that as well. So anyway, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, it's always fun to see all of the pictures, because Gail's team does a great job of capturing all of the assemblies on social media, and all of the schools have a number of veterans that they invite to participate in their assembly to honor them. It's really cool to see that happening in all of our schools.
It's so emotional, I mean, and the music was phenomenal. And the mayor says, she said, "This school has an amazing music program," and I said, "All of our schools do." She goes, "Well, how did they do it?" I said, "We start in kindergarten, and we support music in our schools all the way through, and it sets the stage." And I said, "You need to see more of our schools because our music programs are phenomenal." So that, it was, but it was, it was very touching.
It was. And she taught for 30 years in the Lake Oswego District, and her husband taught for 36 in the battleground. He mentioned, she mentioned that they remembered one student at Prairie that they particularly had to work hard to get over the hump, or maybe that would be a way to say it. And then I was also far fortunate to get my first hug from the mayor, that's the first time I've gotten a hug from her, so that was...
She's a hugger.
She's a hugger, it was good.
She's the best.
Yeah, it was great, it was a great...
She gave a good speech, it was...
She did, the whole thing, but then she wanted to check back on seeing how you were doing now, all these years later.
We're still trying to work with her, she's doing fine.
Oh, yes. All right, thank you Mike.
Sure.
All right, next is focus on student results, R2 academic achievement, this is the second reading. Are we bringing up Bill Omen for this?
Yeah, unless, if you have any questions, he can come up and answer any questions that you might have, I think it is the second reading.
Okay, well then I will turn it over to you to introduce.
Yes, you will, won't you?
I will.
The, hold on a second. So this is results two, and this, so we have gone through at workshop, and then we also had a first reading last week, and it was the effort that Bill led with the instructional cabinet to kind of come up with some changes that rely a little bit more on the OSPI report card as opposed to some of the measurements that we had in the past. And I don't recall any real questions, or I think the board was for the most part good with where we were, so I would recommend that the board accept the proposed revisions for R2 academic achievement as presented for approval.
Did we, I just had a quick question for Mike. Do we have any feedback from the, from EEA on this policy?
I'd ask Bill if whether or not there was any, I don't think so.
Which by Bill?
I'm talking about Bill Omen, not Bill Bell, but Bill is welcome to speak as well. Any Bill, are there any other Bills in the audience?
No, we're going with the OSPI report card, so it's pretty standard for every school district and school in state.
Okay. All right, is there questions or comments from the audience? All right, then we'll call for a motion from the board. I move the board accepts the proposed revisions for R2 academic achievement as presented for approval.
Second.
All right, then we'll open it up to the board for questions or comments.
We worked a lot on getting this, and I think there've been some changes to the OSPI report card that make the data much easier to see than ever before. I don't think this move would have been possible without that kind of state support for transparency of the data. So I'm glad we can shrink that big list down and still retain the sunlight that we want to see on this.
I agree, I think it puts us on a line and really focuses on the things that we want to measure. All right, well then we'll go ahead and take a vote, accept the revisions for R2 academic achievement as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so that one is approved.
Sounds good.
So next is monitoring district operations, so the first one is operational expectation, OE10, which is learning environment. This one is a first reading. Oh, so Bill is coming up with this one.
If we just want to be any Bill from the audience. I guess only for this one.
So last time at workshop, we went through OE10. So we have, if you look at the operational expectations, we had the words "safe and supportive" to learning environment, based upon, it was Rob's suggestion, and we all agreed. The other proposal is we are proposing to strike the indicator number three about confidential student information, because that is covered later on in 7.4, asset protection. And then we are proposing to add indicator three and four, so ensure that all staff are trained annually, and then to ensure that students experience learning environments that create a personal perception of physical, emotional, and social safety. Number five, we have added the boundary invasion training to that, and then we are proposing to strike number six, because it was a little redundant in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed currently in our schools, so it didn't feel like there's a need to have number six. If we go to the interpretation and the indicators. Essentially on 10.1, what we have proposed is to eliminate the different categories amongst the surveys and just go with the student culture and climate survey, the panorama teacher and staff culture and climate survey results, and the panorama student SEL survey. So just kind of striking out the individual indicators underneath that. 10.2, we have proposed to just clean up some of the language, and on evidence of compliance, the proposal there is to add the policies that have been completely updated by Ruben Dorndorf, Director of Student Services. So evidence of compliance would be 3241, the new student discipline, as well as the procedure that goes along with that, as well as 3207, prohibition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as a procedure that goes along with that. Proposing to keep the school discipline data, including any disproportionate discipline data that you see every year when we do the school improvement plan reports, and then just cleaning up some of the subset questions on panorama survey and just listing panorama survey. So you'll get the complete reports on that as well as access to all of that. So again, 10.3 is proposed to be removed, and then the new 10.3, where we've added ensure that all staff are trained annually about district policies and procedures related to student safety, staff interactions with students, professional responsive, respectful, and trauma-informed, and what we are proposing there for evidence of compliance, some additional surveys, as well as we have a revamped civility policy, 5282, and 5282, the procedure that goes along with that, and then also including the professional development provided to staff, primarily the slide deck that is put together by ASC at the beginning of each year, that goes over any changes to the WACs and the RCWs, what those expectations are, as well as the PD schedule provided from student and school services, and curriculum instruction. 10.4, the superintendent will ensure that students experience learning environments that create a personal perception of physical, emotional, and social safety. Our proposal there for evidence of compliance, the panorama data, the HIB report rates, that we would collect, any PBIS or restorative practices, training schedules, any disciplinary exclusion data by demographics. We included the building design guiding principles that talked about a safe and supportive learning environment, student voice events at individual schools, so that would be at a lot of our schools, they actually have leadership classes or student subgroup affinity groups that get together and go over the panorama student survey, and then they basically talk to the staff and tell them why they feel the way that they feel. And so just another avenue to collect student voice that a lot of our schools are doing. And so the proposal there is that we would include information to the board on those events that take place in our schools. Then the last bullet there is just evidence of culturally responsive curriculum and instruction. So you'll hear a little bit about that tonight at the workshop with the literacy adoption currently happening in our elementary schools, and the goal is to just get better at that, but frankly. 10.5, the evidence of compliance there is, what we've added are some policies, 5253 around general staff conduct and student boundaries, as well as 5282, the civility policy, as well as Safe Schools Report, so we can run a report to share that information with you. And then the last, 10.6, would be stricken out. Any questions?
Is it safe effective learning environment or safe supportive learning environment? Which one do I want?
Supportive. Yeah? Unless you want it to be effective.
No.
I can't remember, we worked up this last time.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Maybe it says supportive is where you guys landed.
Safe supportive learning environment.
I like it better than effective.
But it says effective, right?
It does say effective in a couple places.
It says safe effective in the OE, which also has some minor changes, just cosmetic things.
The title says effective.
Title says safe effective on that, and on the indicators, the title says safe supportive.
Gail was supposed to fix that and recover.
Oh yeah, talking about it.
On the OE10, because you said something about striking three, or keeping three, but it's, it has a strike through.
Yeah, the original three, the assure that all confidential student information.
Yeah.
That should be a strike through.
So the next three, the ensure that all staff are trained?
Yeah, that's...
That one's staying?
That stays.
Okay, because that has a strike through on ours. I think probably just a...
Yeah.
We'll just need to make sure we adjust that before. Okay, thanks Bill.
Thank you.
The other thing is, because we did them together, but we should probably talk about them separately, yes.
So we'll start with the learning environment.
Yes.
So this time I recommend the board accept the proposed revisions with the corrections for OE10 learning environment as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
All right, thanks Mike. Is there any question from the audience, questions or comments? Yes.
I just have one comment about the student, is it called the panorama survey? It's, I don't think it's as accurate as other people that don't watch kids take it think it is. I know a lot of times at the middle school level, kids don't even know what the question's asking them, so they guess and take a seat. And our kids that are, because we have 60% of our students under grade level reading, those kids don't actually have their support teacher there helping them with everything. So a lot of kids don't really understand the questions they're asking. We've been asking each other a lot at Covington, how valid is the result information based on what we see in our classrooms when kids are taking that survey?
So after, I'm gonna ask this question, after the survey's taken, do you get the results, are you going back to like the students' class and discussing what the results might have meant with the students?
So that's a question mark, and I don't think that happens every time either.
So maybe we can ask that to Bill.
Yeah, so answer the question, Meg. We've heard concerns through instructional cabinet, not really from middle school, but mainly from elementary, third grade, fourth grade, some of those. So we do have a plan that as we get a little more solid with defining our instructional attendance, that we would work with the panorama folks and actually design our own questions that we feel like are more easily to access by our students of all grades and with lower reading levels as well.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. I don't know if I call on hands or you.
Give their name and address. No?
For, I don't think we need to, for any questions on the agenda, pardon.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Kate, but I'm an ALC teacher at Columbia Valley and elementary, and the panorama questions like for my students are just so far from what they can understand that like, I mean, without completely kind of going through it piece by piece, like there's no way for them to comprehend. So I think like, I'm excited to hear that you're thinking of like doing some customization, and I think when it comes to like a special ed population, which I mean, is a significant population in terms of like their satisfaction, like being creative about ways that you can get data on that from special ed students and the people that work with them and everything.
That's great, we appreciate that feedback, and as we work with panorama, we'll make sure we get feedback from the buildings as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, I think that's important even for us, because as we accumulate this data and we get it, I mean, if we don't analyze the results and figure out if it's effective or not, or if we need to change it, then it really doesn't do us any good, so it's really good feedback that you're giving us, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Art Delmer, I'm just curious about the exclusion portion. How would you know if a student's being excluded, particularly in a great school environment? Put in another classroom, being encouraged not to go to a class, that kind of thing, that might be happening, that might be kind of under your radar, how would you know about that?
For these purposes, what we're talking about are, would be any kind of a formal You might be referring to something like a buddy teacher where they have a student that would go next door to another teacher's class.
Probably reentry programs, right? So I think that's a term that I've heard is reentry, right? So a student shows up to school late, it's marked as tardy, student goes home early, is marked as left, you know, left early from an attendance perspective. I don't think that's gonna show up, other than that sort of thing in your attendance, you don't really necessarily know what's going on if you're just looking at attendance data. Does that make sense?
Sort of. Sort of. Reentry's a very formal program, so we have, we have all the data that kind of shows which students, which schools, what infractions, and kind of what the trends have been. And then with attendance reports, they do show tardies, excused, unexcused, kind of where we're at with the state report card, what they talked about with R2 with our metrics, the previous motion. There is actual two or three of the state report card metrics that deal specifically with student attendance. I think reentry, though, from your purposes, is reentry, when we're thinking of reentry as a student that might have been excluded from a school, and then they're coming back in through a program that's offered at Legacy Tax School, I think that's different than what you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about, like, a grade school or being suspended specifically, and reentering under a scenario where they're not going to school for part of the day at the direction of the principal.
Okay, no, I understand that.
Yeah, I'm concerned with that, but that you don't have visibility to that.
That would show up as a student being suspended. And it would show up as a student being suspended at whichever grade that student is in. And so that would be part of the metrics that we would share.
So once they're not suspended anywhere, and they're on this reentry program, does that make sense what I'm explaining? And they're coming to school for 30 days on this modified schedule.
So your question is, how do we keep track of students that would be on a modified schedule?
Yeah, I guess that's one way to ask it.
Okay. Do you got another way to ask it?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm just a parent.
Is, maybe it's something, maybe we can, after the meeting, connect?
Sure, yeah, we can discuss more.
Okay. This might be a specific situation.
Yeah.
All right. All right, there's any other questions from the audience, then we will entertain a motion from the board.
I move the board accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations, OE 10, learning environment as presented for first reading, move it forward for second reading and approval.
All right, questions or comments from the board?
Where's the second?
Second.
Oh, sorry. All right, questions or comments?
Yeah, with respect to some of those questions, what does Swiss data tell us? Do we see, because we see Swiss data at the KPI meetings each winter time from every school.
Swiss data would show you.
It shows us referrals.
Major or minor infractions, where they occur, grade level, all that.
Attendance and discipline.
I wonder if that's granular enough to intersect with the parents' concern. But it's worth asking when we get there. Because I don't think, we don't get a lot of reports of elementary students who end up on reentry programs, not a lot of suspensions compared to secondary. Jay has information? No? Okay. But I can ask those kinds of questions later on, I suppose. Just to make sure then, on the, we're dealing with the actual policy right now. The document is going to read "safe, supportive learning environment" as titled. The new items three and four will not be struck out, and I don't remember if there were any other modifications where the proposal concluded anything else that's different from the document that's been presented to us for tonight. Are there? Are those all of the?
That's all I have.
Those are all the differences between what we're actually discussing to pass next time. So, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I'd appreciate, I just want to say that I appreciate the feedback about the Panorama surveys again, and, you know, last year being the first year that we really got the data, trying to revise that and take a look at it again this year and see what kind of results, and just keep working on it until we can get it right. All right, so with that, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we'll move that forward. That was the OE 10.
OE 10, learning environment.
So now the interpretation and indicators, which I think we kind of.
Yeah.
Mix the two together.
Right, mix the two.
Yeah.
So at this time, I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectations, OE 10, learning environment interpretation and indicators as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
So again, we'll ask for questions or comments. Okay, then we'll ask for a motion from the board. I move the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectations, OE 10, learning environment interpretation and indicators as presented for first reading, and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second.
All right, any additional questions or comments from the board?
I think I actually covered that as a previous motion.
Yeah. All right, then we will move for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, perfect. So we'll bring both of those back for second reading in December.
Yep.
All right, next up is Matters Reserved for Board Action, which is the 2020-21, that feels really strange to say those numbers in years, right? Evergreen Public Schools calendar. This is a first reading. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Murillo.
So Janay has worked with EEA and with PSC groups, shared with them the proposed calendar for 2021. And you have seen it, we talked about it in workshop a couple weeks ago, or the last meeting. This is the first reading, I think we'll come back with a second reading. The highlights are that we start again before Labor Day, like we have a number of, for as long as I've been here, we've done that. But it's a late Labor Day, so actually, the first day of school would be Tuesday, September 1st, which, as I understand, is the week after Hood to Coast, so people are happy about that. We, for the most part, the calendar looks very similar to this year's. We have Veterans Day in November, we have the In-State and Service Day in October, Non-Student Day. We have three days at Thanksgiving break, as we have in the past, a two-week break in Christmas and New Year's, the MLK holiday, and an end of semester at the end of January. We have Presidents' Day in February. We have built in March 12th as a day off in the middle of the second semester, kind of the bridge between Christmas, another day between Christmas, and then spring break, which is the first full week of April, the 5th through the 9th. I would say the one thing that's new in this calendar this year would be having the Friday before Memorial Day off, as well as Memorial Day. And the last day of school is June 16th, with three scheduled makeup days for snow, the first of those being June 17th, the second being March 12th, and the third being May 28th. So that's what they're built in. I've got a non-color copy of this in front of me, but they're all kind of color-coded on the one that's actually color-printed. I think everyone was pretty happy with that.
It's quite lovely.
Well, yeah, they're.
Easier to read than yours, but.
Yeah, I think they're happy with the color scheme, as well as the schedule. I think that went real well in terms of the conversation with EEA. And if you have any questions, I think it's really pretty straightforward.
Are we matched up on spring break with other Vancouver schools?
Yeah, I was, I was at Clark County Superintendent's meeting last Friday. When Janay and EEA and the group came together, I emailed that out to all the Clark County districts to make sure that they all had that ahead of time. And at that meeting, the understanding was that everybody was on the same spring break schedule with everyone. There's still kind of, some of those districts, other districts in the county hadn't even, hadn't started their conversation yet. I think Vancouver was pretty closely aligned with us, starting, and maybe it's maybe a little bit off. I think with the May 28 day, I don't know that other districts have done that in the past, we might not have that. But most everyone was looking at that September 1st or 2nd start date. I think Canvas in the past has been after Labor Day, but I think they're going to go before Labor Day also. And the end date was around the 16th or 17th for most districts, 15, 16, 17 in that. So that's it.
All right. Okay, so then we will call on the audience for questions or comments on the calendar. Yes?
So several coworkers at our school, we discussed this a little lot, on the 23rd and 24th of November, having the long five-day weekend. The 23rd and 24th is usually a day where almost every school is at half sub-mass, and people are still calling in and gone. And a lot of teachers don't plan quality learning because they know half of their students are gone most days as well. And so there's a lot of questions about why don't we start before the holiday weekend to have a couple of days extra in November to get rid of those non-learning days in our classrooms?
You mean start earlier than September 1st?
Yeah, or do something to put the two days back into that Thanksgiving week, because it's either a substitute problem, or it's a your students are half-year problem, your staff is half-year. It's just always a problem those two days. So I told people I would say something if there was an opportunity somewhere, so here I am.
Thank you.
So the year that we, because we didn't do it, not this year, or the last year, and people seem to enjoy that schedule?
Yeah, and it just seemed to be a little bit more attentive the week before and the week after, because the 23rd and 24th, if you were to walk around in classrooms, you see a lot of movies and games going on. It's not really a two days that is high-quality learning, because everything's at half-mass that week. Look at including attendance.
I don't, yeah, Bill, I mean, Janay, I see Bill raising his hand.
Yeah, the only, and we talked about this, Janay and I are still talking about the last day.
Oh, you're talking about the last day of.
The last, last.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're still talking about that, so. Not the date.
Right, the early release.
The early release.
Right, yeah, because that was something else we had talked about. But I'm just curious if there was, as part of the committee that looked at the question that was raised, how that was, because we didn't recommend any change there.
There was a survey at one point that's split, done, a lot of people liked it and people didn't like it.
I think we, I think, I think I remember from discussion, there was some concern for students that, for some of our families, that, for some families, that's rough for them to have that whole week, whether it be extra childcare, or, you know, some of our families for food issues, for some students.
Some of it was access to meals?
Yeah.
Use program.
Yeah.
I do know, and the counter to that, though, that attendance was an issue, like, our school attendance was down, and so that was something that we were looking at those couple of days, because it, just like that day before Memorial Day, where I imagine attendance historically would be down, because, you know, if people are starting their long weekend, they want to get a head start on that Friday, so they'll send their kids to school. So if they're starting a holiday weekend, they might not send their kids to school that Monday or Tuesday, thinking, what's two days, what's the point? And so if that was an attendance thing, so, I don't know. I mean, it's, but if it's split down the middle, it sounds like one of those things, too, like, we always fight every year, the before Labor Day or after Labor Day, right? And it's, it's one of those things where you, at some point, you have to make a decision, because half the people like it and half the people don't.
And I, and I don't think that, if you started early, you'd get into the end of August, you'd have almost two weeks of school before you got to Labor Day. That might have been an issue, and I think.
Put you out two more days.
You, yeah, so you'd basically potentially go into that third week of June with any kinds of snow days. So I really do think it's kind of a 50/50. And I know originally, the intent was, we'd take that whole week off, we'd do professional development in those days. I don't think there was a lot of, I mean, I think a lot of teachers retired by the time you got to that point, weren't all that excited about thinking about, hey, let's head right in and get some professional development.
Yeah, because I remember going to that one, that one day, and there was nobody there.
Yeah.
So it was, there were a few people.
Were there any Bills at that?
There were a few people there, but it was not well-attended, like we had hoped. I was gonna, oh, do we have any numbers as to what the actual absenteeism was during that time? To kind of get a.
I don't recall, but I'm, I'm assuming there might be the ability to go back and look at that.
Just to see, like, what kind of a drop-off did we have?
Well, I guess we're coming up on it.
Well, so.
We're only a week or so away from that.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And which we'll know before this become, before second reading.
The second reading, right.
So that might be kind of interesting to see.
Do we know why you guys changed it last year? I mean, I know I wasn't on the board base.
Because we needed the days.
No, I mean.
The strike.
Right, the strike made it for the calendar for last year.
So those days were reverted.
But why did you choose for this year to not have it? Because for the two years prior, it was for the full week off.
Was it two years or was it one year?
It was one year we had it.
They had it for one year, and there was the strike, and so the calendar had to be condensed.
Right.
And those two days were reverted to classroom days, right?
Right.
Why didn't we do it for this current year?
For this current year.
In two weeks?
Listen, we make a motion, I actually have that question.
For 2017, 2018, we had the whole week off. For 2018, 2019, we had the whole week off, so that had to change.
Well, right.
And then for 2019, 2020, we do not have the whole week off. So why did that change?
I can't remember what the discussion was.
I think I have to.
Maybe we can have Janay speak to it also, since she's been.
I think it was the timing.
On the Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah.
So that came out of bargain, that we didn't have any additional professional development days, and that's what it was intended for, so it went back into the classroom. We knew that we wouldn't count those days available for that.
Yes.
And just like, I totally understand what Maggie's saying, but I'm a special ed teacher, and from my perspective, having a whole week off was like, I saw a lot of regression of skills. And being an elementary special ed teacher, like, most of the time, my parents send their kids to school, which I love. And so my kids were there, and we needed those days. I mean, we kept, we kept going, and, and when we, the year that we had it off, it was really hard, because we lost a lot of skills, and then to regain those skills. So I think it is one of those things where there's kind of like, like, I think it's 50/50, because, like, between, even between elementary and secondary, like, there are different feelings about it, there are different, like, you know, I think at maybe a secondary level, families are less likely, like, to worry about those days, whether they send them or not. And at elementary, maybe, I don't know, we don't see quite as much teacher absence or student absence, I don't think, at least at my school. So I think, I think, like, a lot of times, it comes out of the survey, like, EEA does some surveys around it, and the data came back, even for last year, that it was kind of split.
Yeah, our data agrees with the district.
Okay.
We will, we will be able to, I guess it's not next week, but the next week, we'll get to see.
Yeah.
If we can collect that data.
And bring it back to our screening on December.
Or something.
All right, then we will call for a motion.
Okay, wait, what are we motioning?
Recommend the board accept. Do you want to do it?
Well, wait a minute, I'm, I'm, hang on, I just wanted to.
Okay, so we're looking at moving it forward for a second reading and adoption.
Okay, yeah. Sorry.
So this time, I recommend the board accepts the calendar for 2020, and that's presented, move it forward for a second reading and adoptions, and then I'll, I'll bring additional information.
Yeah, next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So move it.
Second.
All right, any additional questions? So it sounds like we're going to get the information about attendance for those Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And then we will have that before we can, we vote on it for a second reading.
Yeah.
For December. But as of now, one year before, as it is. Okay. Good conversation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wanted to say, I guess historically, for me, every year of the last five years, we adopt the calendar in November, December, basically, the second week of school, parents start asking me when the first day of the fall is due.
I know.
It's like, when are you going to do that? And I want to make sure this is clear, the school calendar is a bargain issue. It's discussed with EEA, Janay.
That's right.
Every year. And the surveys and feedback from teachers and other staff are taken into account, so that we build something that has the best possible consensus. Is that a good rephrasing of everything we've been talking about?
Yep.
Right. Then, yeah, just wanted to make sure that that was. Then, yeah, just wanted to make sure that that was as clear as possible as that we have to discuss the calendar with the people who work here. Make sure that their voice is always included in that.
But it's also coordinating with other districts because of Cascadia as well. So we have to make sure that it's not just us sitting down at a table and, my microphone is broken. So I just put it down, sorry, it came apart. You guys can all hear me, right?
Yeah.
See? But so it's a lot more than just our walls. We have to make sure that we're coordinating with everybody else as well, especially because of Cascadia.
You know, I think it's also worth mentioning that preschools rely on the Evergreen calendar and aligning it with Vancouver and Van Gogh and Camas and Washington, et cetera, happens in these meetings, right? And that the, so the entire county pretty much relies on this process to plan business and holiday events and things.
Even at work today, as we plan our vacation calendars for next year, it is all centered around the school calendar. And so people can't really decide what to do until the school calendar is decided, so it.
Yeah. No pressure, they want to know like three weeks before the start of school, when to start a next year's school.
So, especially when it came to hood codes.
Yeah.
That was a lot of pressure about that.
Is there a place in the surveying for parent feedback or other business, like Chamber of Commerce feedback or something into the school calendar? Is there, is there that voice in the process at all?
I don't. Well, the board meetings for parents.
Right.
Come and make sure.
And beyond that, I just want to express personal appreciation for the people who came to offer feedback.
Well, they express to on social media, but usually once the calendar's out.
Yeah, and once it's out, then you get the negative reaction, it's like, why?
But that's okay because we do look at that and take into consideration for when we think about how we build the calendar for years going forward, we do look at that feedback.
Well, maybe we could put the, that we pass this for a second, it'll go to a second reading and people can give input. Now.
Yeah.
Now.
Do you hear that, Gil?
I think that's.
So, just to let people know that we'll be making a final determination on it at the next board meeting, so.
There's a lot of thought that goes in this, a lot of goodwill that goes into this and that can't go unremarked. Everybody means well.
All right, good discussion. Any other comments? Then we'll go ahead and call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving it back to second reading. All right, it's time for the good news. Gil Spohler?
Just lingering back there.
I didn't skip you this time.
It's okay, it's okay. I'll be brief though, because I know we've got still a lot to go on the agenda, so we have a copy. But the photo at the very top is, includes two of our folks that are really, I would say, near and dear to the district. One is our Health Services Manager, Holly Law, and then our Evergreen Citizens for School Board Member, Toby Lucic. Both were honored recently by Identity Clark County's Learn Here Awards. Holly was recognized for her longtime public health contributions, including her work last year on the measles outbreak. And then Toby, as you know, has been an integral part of Evergreen Citizens for Schools, helped us pass two levy campaigns in 2016, 2019, as well as of course, our very successful bond campaign in 2019. And I know Superintendent Merlina was there at the ceremony as well.
And I think Erin, oh no, she didn't make it.
But there's a lovely photo of her. Speaking of our 2018 bond measure, as you know, we have a lot of work going on throughout the district, but of course, we also wanted to involve our students in a lot of that work. So you see your picture of Pioneer Elementary School students, they are planting, or they planted trees as part of their school improvement project and that was funded by the 2018 Facilities Bond Work. At the same time, the Advanced Placement Environmental Science students at Evergreen High School also planted trees for many difference. At the top of the next column, you'll see several girls from Endeavour Elementary, Marion, and then also Marion Elementary and Union High School. They attended the Girls Inc. Annual Luncheon, honoring the International Day of the Girl, and that luncheon also raised funds to support a wide range of mentoring programs here in our community. Each year, we have featured Pacific Middle School, they usually do a pink-out day and have some sort of creative photo that they put together, usually involving a staff member, including one of my staff members standing on the roof of Pacific Middle School, so I'm always interested in how that comes together. But this year, they did things a little different and decided to focus on all cancers and called the day Stomp Out Cancer Day. And we have Zoe Hearn, a junior at Mountain View High School. She won a very prestigious sneaker design contest, was honored at Nike headquarters recently, where she was presenting, where she presented her shoes and in detail described the engineering and energy absorption factors that could withstand the dynamic movement of Zion Williams, who is Superintendent Merlina.
Yeah, it was the Pelicans number one graphic wear.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll be bringing follow-up as her she gets developed in months to come. Meanwhile, Sharisha Mannan, a senior at Mountain View High School, is one of only about 3,800 students in the United States out of 1.9 million who take the ACT at the highest possible composite score of 36. Evergreen Public Schools had a group of Latino students attend the annual Clark County Latino Youth Leadership Conference at Washington State University, Vancouver. And for some of our students, it was the very first time they visited a college campus and they were able to interact with a variety of people there. And then we'll be following up at the high schools to continue that interest with them. The Mountain View High School Boys Golf Team was recognized as the Dairy Farmers of Washington and Les Schwab Team of the Month for October. They honor teams for their performance, dedication in the classroom and service of the community, as well as their athletic ability. And then as we are finishing up our recognition to veterans, both last week and then there were some ceremonies today as well, we also wanted to recognize something that happens ongoing in our district, and that's a teacher at Mill Plain Elementary, Hannibal, who has been part of a program called Operation Pillow Talk for the past seven years. They make pillowcases and then ship them to service members throughout the world, help lift their morale and also provide them something for the holidays. And they just shipped out a number of these pillowcases this past month. So another nice reminders, we celebrate veterans day. And that's your good news for this month.
Thank you, Will. All right, next we'll move on to the budget update.
So, we're still very early in the year. We haven't finished closing 18, 19 yet, this week that will occur. We started the year with around 24 million in fund balance for 18, 19. And I would say at one point mid-year, there was an idea that that reserve for 18, 19 could have gotten a low, as low as 20 to 21 million. And then we, we've made some adjustments, kind of froze spending, I think we're going to probably end up somewhere around 23, a little over 23 million. So there's still a little bit of a reduction, but not as significant as what it may have been without some of the actions that we took. I'll come back in December with a more thorough report on that. 19, 20, we are three months in enrollment-wise. This year's enrollment, usually what I do when I'm estimating for the year, I look at what did we, how did it grow last year, rather than taking several years with the trends, it's like, what did we do last year type of situation? So far this year, our enrollment growth is slower than what we have seen, or the decline a little greater in some of the grades than what we have seen in previous years. Right now, I'm estimating that we'll be about 25 students below at elementary level, 45 at middle school and 20 at the high school, so that's about 90 students overall out of approximately 24,000. So it's not as a percentage a huge number, if you think about that, you know, 240 would be 1%. So we're less than 1% off the projection, but 90 students is probably somewhere around $800,000 in total. Again, out of a $380 million budget, it's not a huge amount. And overall, so what I'm doing right now is starting to work on the current year's projections. Usually I'll wait until November or even December, but I just want to make sure that we're getting ahead of that. So I'm working on that as well. So I don't see any cause for alarm because there are other things that are happening that are positive for us. Just wanted to kind of update you enrollment-wise on where we're at right now. So that's my update at this point.
All right, any questions for Mike? All right, next is board comments, comments by the school board.
Right through the performance audit, email to us, when are we scheduled to discuss that?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. And no comments.
Okay, then. Well, Rob and I and Rachel, being that we were all running for reelection, were invited to Ilahi, to their PTA meetings. And the one that Rob and I attended, and I will get into the campaigning side of it, but it was interesting to see their process for allocating for the needs of the school, that, you know, the, what the teachers were asking for and, and thank you, Mike, for being available for my texts on certain items that I was thinking may need to be, you know, accessed through the district, but they were quite diligent in their research about these different items and, and pretty thoughtful about the kinds of things that they were, were asking for. So that was kind of a fun thing to see and it was a pretty hefty amount of money that they were going for.
I think they spent, something like $25,000?
Yeah.
Or they, that's how you make your purchase order in the PTA, is by vote, right?
Yeah.
And they agreed to spend $25,000 to support the educational program.
Yeah.
It was almost all academic stuff.
Yeah, it was. It was good. Let's see. See what's all going on here. Of course, we all went to the projects tour, which was nice, I appreciated that being organized. Where's Sue, she's out there. Thank, oh, there he was. That was fun to see and it's exciting to see the walls or, you know, the framing going up and things starting to look like real buildings, so that, that was really fun. I'm still working with the teams on the interior, on the exteriors for, over by the legacy transitions and all of that. So I think we've got that hammered out on the exterior finishes and interior color selections and stuff, so that's good to have that kind of hammered out. I went to a meeting over at Clark College, the Vancouver Education Diversity and Inclusion Committee, for, on a meeting for attracting teachers of color to our district. We need to have kind of a discussion about that at some point, maybe in a workshop. And I did want to connect with Janaye and you about who should be going to that committee and, but the good news was, is that the work that we're doing with WSU in our quick turnaround program and the number of students that have graduated through that, that we have in our program was pretty impressive. Because that was kind of the gist of the meeting, was that that's the kind of program we need and we're like, well, yeah, we already do it. So that was pretty cool. And I guess Portland State has a program that's kind of similar to that. So that was, that was good news. So I think it's worth getting involved in.
I agree.
We just need to figure out how we want to be involved.
I mean, I think there are, and we've been talking about some of the programs, Emily, you've got the WSU, there's also ESD University, which is another, trying to find, I think we have pretty good ideas internally within the district, how to try to identify, but we've also been talking about externally, how do we create better pathways or better connections with groups to try to, try to encourage exactly that. But yeah, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, what kind of what the expert that was there to talk to everybody was saying is that that pillar of community support is kind of what's missing. And this group, I think, is attempting to become that community support piece and coordinating that. So that'll be something we can maybe be helpful in with that. And we already talked about the Veterans Day Assembly, that was super fun. Yeah, so that's all I have.
Jenny? You went to the North End Concert.
I did, I went to the North Side's Choral Concert, which as always are amazing performances. This year was a little special because I actually had a child participating in it, so I stayed the entire time instead of, you know, for a couple songs on the beat. But yeah, no, it's, I'm always very impressed with how our students improve, progress through the years, when you start them in the elementary and then the middle schoolers sing and I was not aware that, I guess, one of our middle schools, I think they said last year, didn't actually have a choir, because nobody signed up for it. So they were not, they did actually did not participate in the Fall Choral Concert.
They had a choir, they just didn't participate in the?
I don't know that they had, oh, very many people if they had a choir at all. They said that there wasn't a choir, so that they're actually, the choir teachers are now coming into the elementary schools and starting to kind of get them interested and to, so that they're ready.
That was interesting, because when I, I did the East Side, the next evening was the East Side and I was there and it was interesting, one of the music teachers had asked the students that were in high school or middle school to raise their hands, that they had been involved all the way since elementary. And it was a, you know, good number of students and so it's, I felt like it was really neat to see all of these elementary students, because that's the majority, and they have four schools singing together, that they can see now, like, this is my pathway throughout my school career and I want to be singing at that level too. So it's kind of fun to see that progression.
Well, I'm not, I, I don't believe all the schools participate in them. I, my daughter, I had to have her to school an hour before school started twice a day, so it's not something that.
To participate in this?
Yeah, to be part of the, to be on choir, whereas I know that orchestra and band usually come in during like morning recesses and the kids give up their recess to participate. But choir, it was the first thing in the morning and they got an hour, and it was for about a month before the festival.
Yeah, so the choir concert was really cool, I really enjoyed our tour of the schools. I joined Mike for the community tour, we did have some really good conversation there. And then when Victoria spoke about doing some of the color for the Legacy Transitions Campus, I actually was invited to the Heritage Design Advisory Team, they had their kickoff meeting, which was really fun. I got to work with a group of students who was selected to work on that team and just kind of some of those, you know, what's your wish list? What would it look like if, you know, keeping the culture intact or what, what kinds of things do you see for the future? And it was kind of fun to work with the students on that and kind of get their ideas of what they see for the school in the future. So I'm excited to join that team.
I forgot one thing, actually, while we were out doing our project tours, we were at Heritage on their amazing new football field, the turf. It's the first time I had been out there on their new turf, turf field. And we actually, well, not we, two of us got into a football, started playing football with some of the kids on the field. So Mike and Julie actually started playing football. The lights came on and so it was, it was pretty cool, they were.
The kids were.
The kids took their shoes off because they, one of them couldn't run in his shoes and they were getting real serious.
They were.
No one was injured. I have 90 seconds of footage.
Kids were fine, the adults were.
And we have pictures to prove it.
Julie throws football, bends a mic.
Well, well, that might be your.
Since I've only ever thrown a football 12 times in my life, it's not true.
Julie does have a good arm.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention, I was at the Girls in STEM event. I listened to, you know, the presentation.
Elizabeth Rush.
Elizabeth Rush. And buy some of her books, sign for a librarian in the district. I think you can get to which library, I'm not telling. But it was, it was neat to see just how much interest there is in the sciences, pathology, the Union and Mountain View and Pacific, and I think one of their schools' robotics teams were there. Mike got a chance to meet some of those students and listen to these kids just express their competence in ways that, you know, companies ought to just start hiring.
It was great, yes. I think there were over 300 kids signed up for that.
For the robotics?
For, for the event.
Oh, for the event, yeah. It was a really good turnout, and I came away inspired.
Yeah, it was great.
That's good.
And Rachel was able to attend the PE showcase.
Yeah, that is true, I did do that. All of our elementary schools had the grade participate in PE showcases, and my daughter got to participate, and I was really impressed by the teachers, the physical education teachers who were wrangling all these students.
Yeah, it was great.
They get to do some fun stuff.
Yeah.
They're so cute out there, these little ones, really.
Let me see the track.
Yeah, they were doing pancake, one of the, they were, they had like, my daughter got to do Pancake Robot, where they put a bean bag on their head and then walked around like robots. And it was super entertaining. But they had other people riding like little bikes, they were doing some jump rope type things, they had, they were throwing balls at each other, to each other.
At each other, yeah.
At each other, yeah.
And Julia did that, star of all of them.
I like PE class. All right, future agenda items. Sounds like we might have one that Victoria brought up.
Yeah.
All right, so next is citizen comments. At this time, we'll ask anyone that would like to address the board to come up to the podium, you'll give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Make sure it's not legal or personnel in nature, and it looks like we have Arthur that's signed up.
Yeah, he said not legal or personnel in nature.
Yes.
All right, okay. So one of my issues is somewhat personnel in nature, and I was going to request an executive session for that. So I'm curious if that's something that we could do at a future date. So one's in particular is a code of conduct violation, I think, of a couple employees in the district that I'd like to discuss.
Yeah, so what we could do is probably have somebody reach out with you afterward, and then we could set up a time to talk, because we wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was asked for, so that makes sense. The other one was, I became aware of an employee who worked for the district who was at a high level, who was, I think, involved with procurement processes. He traveled international travel, I think, at a vendor's expense. And coming from a financial services, government procurement type background, I thought that seemed kind of unusual, so I'm curious for school district employees involved procurement, you know, what's the policy on sort of gifts like that, where you're receiving this international travel, whether it's to a conference or something at the vendor's expense, right? So that's, if it's not currently a policy on that, it seems like there should be something that addresses that part of the procurement process for the district. Does that make sense? And then my other concern was conflict of interest around spousal relationships with employment in the district. I've heard concerns from parents at Harmony about, in particular, in the special education space, the principal and the director of Special Education Services being husband and wife. So I'd like to request that the board review policies around conflict of interest in employment of family members and spouses in those high-level positions that might be making parents uncomfortable with what's going on potentially, even if there's not a conflict of interest, the potential perception of conflict of interest, right? And that could go for staff as well, right? I mean, how does staff feel when there's those type of relationships that exist within the district? If that makes sense.
Yeah. So, yeah, we just want to be careful about bringing up specific employee or anything, situation, so...
Sure.
And we can have somebody reach out to you afterward.
Okay, so we can discuss, I guess, that in the executive sessions as well, if that fits, sort of like a general policy thing that should be in place, but...
Yeah, we can, one of the things with citizen comments is if it's not on our agenda, we can't necessarily respond.
Sure, sure.
But we can have somebody follow up with you afterwards, okay?
Sure. I think that's all, unless you have questions with me?
No.
So just stay and we'll...
I'd like to give you my phone number, too, there, just nothing I want on the public record, but...
Yeah, we can, we can have somebody connect with you right after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Arthur, can you show us?
Dolman, UMR.
Yeah, we have it.
I'm just making notes.
And then Amy Fredericks? Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening.
Okay, you can give us your name and address, please.
Oh, yes, Amy Fredericks, 525 Northeast 127th Street. Good evening, my name is Amy Fredericks, and I've worked for Evergreen since 1996. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the D-word dyslexia. Sadly, there are some people in education who refuse to believe it's real. I believe it is, it is, and so does our state legislature. In less than two years, Senate Bill 6162 will require us to assess all K-2 students in phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, letter sound knowledge, and rapid making skills. After screening, trained educators will be required to provide evidence-based, multisensory, structured literacy interventions. I have many questions about how this law will be implemented in Evergreen. For example, the Washington Dyslexia Advisory Council released five recommended screeners in August. How will our district go about selecting one? How and when will we train classroom teachers about dyslexia? Who will screen classroom teachers or intervention specialists? These questions will represent just the tip of the iceberg. In June 2020, the Advisory Council will release their recommendations for implementation. However, I believe that our district should be proactive. We should not wait until June to act. I am requesting that the board convene in Evergreen Dyslexia Advisory Council comprised of staff and community members who are knowledgeable about dyslexia. If we have a council in place prior to June, then we can hit the ground ready the moment that state's recommendations are released. In closing, I'd like to share a personal story about why I care so much about this issue. My brother and his family live in Hawaii. When my nephew, Kayen, was a month shy of leaving kindergarten, his teacher said he was significantly behind in reading. She suggested he repeat kindergarten, and so we did. A few years later, Kayen had yet to break the reading code. As expected, my family was worried, not only about Kayen's lack of reading ability, but also his self-esteem. During one of my mom's visits to the island, she found a note hidden in Kayen's room that said, "I'm stupid." Fortunately, with the help from a colleague, I realized that Kayen has dyslexia. For nearly two years, I tutored him three times a week on FaceTime using an explicit multisensory program. I proudly tell you that now he's almost finished reading the third Harry Potter book. It's commonly believed that nearly one in five students has dyslexia. There is ample scientific research that explains how we can teach all children to read, not just those with reading challenges. When I think about Kayen and the hundreds, perhaps even thousands of children in our district who are like him, I cannot help but feel a sense of urgency. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, those were the only two that were signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing no one else, well, the board will go into a recess, where we'll assign paperwork, then we'll reconvene for a board workshop, where we'll have curriculum and instruction update, operational expectations OE5, financial planning interpretation and indicators, operational expectations OE12, facilities interpretation and indicators, a legislative update, superintendent's update, and then we'll have a board meeting debrief. We will then have an executive session to review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.